Yes.
Saturn's moon.
Lay down Saturn.
All right, we're going to start momentarily. Jenny, so around 8:30?
Yeah.
Full effect. So if you see me doing something, that is why I am still... It's like, hey. Who was not?
Waiting on Council Lane.
Everything else.
Let's, um... Well, let's, uh, let's start. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Newburyport City Council meeting of February 12th. I'd like to have a moment of silence for a Newburyport resident who recently passed away. Deborah Ann Knight was 84 years old. She was a lifelong resident of Newburyport, graduated from Newburyport High School in 1956. Loved her hometown, had numerous jobs over the years, and her fondest roles involved service to others. She worked as a teacher's aide for special needs students. She kept books and much more for the Boys and Girls Club of Salisbury, and made a lifelong commitment to helping others battling cancer through her volunteer work with the American Cancer Society and Anna Jake's Hospital. She passed away on February 6th, left many relatives in Newburyport, including, I believe she was the aunt of, uh, of Marshall Murray, I'm told. So let's keep her and her family in our thoughts. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk could call, I'd be happy, happy to miss President for the 7:00 PM City Council meeting on February 12th, 2024. Counselor Khan.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Lane.
Here.
I'm sorry.
I'm here.
I heard you. Thank you. Counselor McCauley, here. Counselor Preston.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah.
Counselor Zee.
Here.
Counselor Dunia.
Present.
Counselor Granis.
Here.
Counselor Harmon.
Here.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
We have 11 present, two of those remote. Files, the late files, the councilors will see there are four of them. Thank you. It's Appointment 478 Edward Neumer to the Historic Mission up till 3:15, 2027. Communication 536, which is an update regarding Ordinance 164, which is the zonal zoning amendment relating to Global R3 multifamily. Communication 537, an email from Stephanie Nikotic on the very same ordinance, 164. Ordinance 165 is a zoning ordinance to establish a state and high street overlay district.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files?
Second.
And we need a roll call on that? Everything. I think we need a roll call on everything today. Yep, I didn't want to say it, but true. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Dunia.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron. Yes. Now, public comment. So if the clerk could get the names off the board. We will be doing also public comment through Zoom, so if anybody wants to speak, please raise your hands. And I'll just remind folks, they have two minutes to speak on an item that is on the agenda, and they would need to give their name and Newburyport Street address at the beginning of their comment. So again, anybody online, if you raise your hand, I will keep track of that, and we will get to you shortly. Thank you. So we have four folks speaking at public comment. First is David DeRosa. David, if you could just get to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you two minutes. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Name is David D. Rosa, 6 Arthur Welch Drive, Newburyport. And I work directly for the buyer with regards to the... These comments all relate to the rezoning of the R3, which affects the old mobile site at State and High. And I work directly for the buyer. I've worked with him for 22 years, so he asked me to be project manager on this. And since September 22nd, when we first met with Andy, and September 27th, when we first met with the neighbors and the butters, we've been through 10 plan revisions, which also involved Scott Brown and engineering of the surrounding properties, as well as 107 State Street, to the tune of the expenditure of well over 133,750 to date, which includes half the deposit, which is now nonrefundable due to, in part to some of the extensions that we had to make with Global, multiple extensions, which are now, we're out of engineering, architecture, legal, et cetera. I just wanted to say that we've tried our absolute best to work with the city and neighbors to make something great for everybody, which we truly do believe it will be. And if we all want the same thing, let's please move forward, because time is working very much against us, not just for the buyer, John, but for, for all of us. And, you know, to that point, given the challenges and costs, not to mention potential changing markets, higher interest rates, you know, as an advisor to John, I've, I've at some points tried to steer him away from this project. And still have feelings in that direction sometimes, but, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to do it. I just think it's, you know, it could, it's very challenging. And I suspect that not every potential buyer would be as willing to spend the amount that John has with no guarantee of, of an end result for this project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeRosa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Nikotic.
Stephanie Nikotic, 93, High Street. I, um, I appreciate the pressure that everyone is under. And I understand it. I understand that, you know, it's, time is critical and that you've been told by the city and by the developer that, that this needs to get done. I do think it's unfortunate that 90 days pretty much went away without the council doing any work on this, because Counselor Zaid's proposal, that's a late file, for an overlay district, makes a lot of sense to me. It's very clean. It solves the problem without having to get into legal agreements with Global about future commercial uses. And it solves the problem, I understand, some councilors have been concerned that we're changing the multifamily use definition citywide through this ordinance, which is really meant to deal with one corner. So I think it's an elegant solution. I think that there is a way, if the council is committed, to get it done by the end of March. So if that, if it's something that you will consider, please do. I am still concerned in, Council President, you, you know this, I'm concerned about the agreement for a deed restriction language and what it means and what might result from it if something happens to this particular plan. I do appreciate the buyer and his team working with neighbors. We really don't feel that we went through everything that we wanted to before this came out as a development agreement. And so I hope they are committed to continuing to work with neighbors if this project is going to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Novak Nikotic.
Novak Nikotic, 93, High Street. We lived next to that Global Gas Station property for last 35 years. And we are pretty much supportive of the residential development on that parcel. The, the problem is little bit in the rezoning and especially multifamily, changing definition for multifamily, where has been used some language like reduced volume, reduce masses, appearance, some language which will be difficult to, whether for zoning or whoever, it would be difficult to, to enforce or to, to figure out reduce from what? Do we need now every property to have another design so that this one will be reduced in comparing to the previous one? So that the whole language is, in my opinion, very much rushed just to accommodate, accommodate this development, which I fully support, but the implication would be much beyond this single development. So my, my, my really problem is with the, the language used to redefine multifamily definition.
Thank you. Jennifer Day.
Jennifer Day, I'm at 91 High Street. And I haven't spoken about this issue yet, though I've been listening to what other people have been saying. And I've been speaking about this for over a year with my other neighbors, as I am in a butter. It seems like there's a Plan A and a Plan B. The Plan A, if I understand it correctly, is to combine a rezoning with a deed restriction. Sounded good to me. Sounded like a really good plan. And then last week, Mr. Zaid came up with an idea of an overlay district, which also sounded really interesting, really good. But we kind of need to move along with this, and I urge you all to, to take this seriously tonight. The delay that may happen with the March 25th possible overlay problem being solved, that also puts us back a little bit. There's no guarantee that we can have that done by the end of March. Therefore, I would urge you to vote tonight in favor of the package that seems like the best thing going for us now. We've got so many people on board, all the architects, the lawyers, everybody's on board, the butters. I think we should go ahead with it. Thank you.
Thank you. And hands raised, Rick Tinker. You are allowed to speak. If you could unmute yourself.
Good evening. Rick Tinker, 10 Dexter Street, and the Chair of the Planning Board. I'm speaking basically to reinforce the planning board's support and recommendations on the Ordinance 164, the zoning of the State Street property. The existing zoning, really little portion of property, unlike most of the other properties in the High Street Residential District, this property is much smaller than the minimum lot size. Really nothing can be done with it without a number of variances, and it really doesn't fit with the character of the other HSR properties. And in contrast, it really does make sense to be rezoned to the same district as the majority of the existing properties, which is the R3 district. That will enable a residential reuse of the property at an appropriate scale. And so simply the rezoning part of the fourth ordinance has the support of the planning board for that reason, and my support. On the second part, the change in the definition of multifamily. Our core definition kind of combines a definition of a use and definition of structures. This would break that apart again and enable a more flexible use of the multifamily use and application in the R3 district and a few other districts in the city. I think it's important to note that multifamily anywhere in the city is only allowed as a special permit use as a discretionary review by, in this case, the zoning board of appeals. The board can hire someone outside experts to conduct design reviews, site reviews, bureau reviews. So there is plenty of control by the city in what happens regardless of how the definition has changed. So we thought of the planning board that it was a perfectly appropriate thing to make that definition, and we're not concerned at all about extending it to other parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Two minutes exactly. All right. And I'm going to lower hand. Okay. That is it for public comment. Mayor's comment.
All right, good evening. Great to see everyone. First off, we've got some snow coming tomorrow. We started the day thinking we were going to get 12 inches, and now we're down to about four inches. But schools have decided to cancel for tomorrow, so I have also closed public buildings as well. I think the problem with this storm is just the timing of it. I think, you know, anytime you're talking about some decent snow during school pickup and things like that, I think it's best just to stay off the road, so I, I support Sean Gallagher in moving forward with that. So the blue lights are on now. Snow emergency will go into effect tonight at 3:00 AM. Anything changes to that, obviously we'll push out to residents, but we can push information out to them all day. Last week, I was able to go to a meeting around Whittier. I was invited by Superintendent Maureen Lynch and leaders from the other 10 communities. I thought it was a pretty productive meeting. I think a large part of the discussion revolved around kind of debriefing over the special election vote that took place on January 23rd. We did talk about some next steps, which I thought were great, just some highlights from there. I'll let you guys know, they are talking to Meramec about tying into their sewer system, which is great. That would be a fraction of the cost of then building a, a new wastewater treatment plant. So those discussions are ongoing. And then they also said, don't expect any changes to our annual assessment. It'll be right around the same, same price this year. I think we're going to find that a lot of the things that were talked about during that special election weren't actually very factual, so I feel very comfortable moving forward in our relationship with Whittier. We are talking as well about forming a Whittier Task Force to kind of look at, first, the regional agreement. As you know, this regional agreement is over 50 years old, it's never been amended. So I would say right now, I would say 10 communities are pretty solid behind that effort. And again, we've already started some of that effort on our end, looking at what we would be looking for in a new regional agreement, so that will be moving forward. The idea is to have town administrators and mayors, along with selectmen, select people, and city councilors. So I've already talked to Council President Ed Cameron about that as well. And I just, just one more thing on Whittier. I kind of see three tracts going on here right now. I think that first tract is looking at that regional agreement. I think the second tract is coming up with a plan for capital improvements at Whittier over the next several years. I think the task force could actually have a, a lot to do with that. And that third tract is on the state level, you know, one looking at MSBA processes, particularly around vocational schools moving forward, but then also anything that we come up with as far as a regional agreement, once it gets ratified by all 11 city councils and select boards, then that would go to the state legislator. So we're working with our partners, Senator Tar and Representative Shan with that. The State of the City, again, is coming up on February 28th. We're excited about that. It's also the Second Annual Public and Community Service Awards, so there's still time to get those nominations in Wednesday, end of day. So if you haven't done that yet, please get those in. We're excited for that night. And as you know, Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll will also be here with us. A little update on Newburyport Public Schools. We're submitting two statements of interest to the MSBA for their accelerated repairs program around the roofs at the middle school and the high school, so we're excited about that. They celebrated their 100th day last week with the visit from Zero to Hero at the Brezina Hand. And we also got introduced to our new Director of Student Services, Bradley Brooks. He'll be starting on July 1st, but he's excited to get started. He's coming to us from North Middlesex Regional. So we're excited for Bradley to join us. In your packet tonight, the Public Art Committee, a number of great candidates applied. So we look forward to those discussions about their nominations and hope that they'll be sworn in soon. We're excited for that group to get to work. We had a department head meeting last week, which we had a really productive conversation around the FY25 budget. Funding Director Ethan Manning kind of walked us through expectations this year, guidelines, outlook, process. You know, again, we have a couple new department heads, too. They haven't been through this process before. We've got a lot of different budget, different budget pressures this year, so we'll make sure we'll get into that more in the coming weeks. But we're excited to get that process started. And we did our first short-term rental unit inspection last week. The property owners needed to make some small revisions and updates. They were understanding of the process and actually thanked us, thanked the city, particularly the three departments, fire, health, and building, for conducting the inspection. And just lastly, real quickly on Global, you know, a lot of time has been put into this, so I'll, I'll, you know, I'll leave it to the experts to talk tonight about it. And we'll have our city solicitor joining us. We're going to have a, a Planning Director Andy Port talk about this. But this has been a lot of time put into this. I, I do think we have a really good plan put in place right now. So it would be nice if we could move forward on this, but I'll, I'll look forward to hearing your discussion. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions, comments for the mayor?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. That leads us to the consent agenda. Which consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for January 29th, 2024. We have Communication 534, which is an administrative memo related to a Jim McCarthy letter on updating the sign ordinances. And we have quite a number of parklet applications, all going to LNP, license and permits. Agave, Angie's, Angry Donut, Bar 25, Brine, Carmine, Loretta's, and you Kitchen, Oregano, Paddle Inn, Port Tavern, and Anchor Pizza. There are no transfers. We have a number of appointments. 463 Andrea Wheatman, 183 High Street, to the CPA until 3:15, 27, has to go to Community Services. 464 Kristen Dunia, 16 Olive Street, Library Board of Directors, 3:15, 2027, again, Community Services. 465 Carolyn McCarthy, Four Coombe Circle, to the Library Board of Directors until 3:15, 27. Appointment 466 Larry Junta, 139 Crow Lane, says to the zoning board of appeals, as I'd like to announce, a scribner's error, should have been associate member, zoning board of appeals until 7:31, 2027, to go to P and D. 467 Kim Turner, 27 High Street, Public Arts Committee, until 3:15, 25, to go to Community Services. The next 1, 2, 3, 4 are all going to the same place, Public Arts Committee. Nicole Wayland, 12 Lafayette Street, Shanna Satori, 2 Garden Street, Catherine Moran, 9 Garden Street, and Peter Kazasti, 35 Temple Street. Cynthia Chartley, that's Appointment 472, of 12 Market Street, is to go to the Cultural Council until 3:1, 2027. And Paula Esti likewise to go to the Cultural Council, she lives at 3 Pine Street, as the liaison on the Public Arts Committee until 3:1, 27. A confirmatory appointment, Dennis Morrell, 83, Bow Ridge Road, Lynn, as building instructor until 2:15, 27. That was previously approved at last meeting in 2026. It's actually a three-year appointment, so it's extended out one more year and back for that, to go to P and D. Reappointment Kevin Wallace, 4 Oak Street, Fruit Street, a local historic district, 3:15, 2027, to go to P and D. Reappointment of Robert Courier, 3 Summit Place Affordable Housing Trust, 3:15, 2026, to go to P and D. And the reappointment of Andrew Port, 61 Water Street, as the Director of Planning and Development until 3:15, 2026, to go to P and D. Following items are coming out of the respective committees, Budget and Finance. Communication 531 transfers 177 and 180, transfers 178 and 179. And Order 532, General Government, Order 528, and Appointment 462. License and Permits, Application 169 and Application 173. Planning and Development, Ordinance 164. And Public Works and Safety, Communication 532, all coming out. And that's the consent agenda this evening with that small scribner's change on a zoning board of appeals for Larry Junta. What is the wish of the council? Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I'd like to remove Appointment 466. Motion approved as amended?
Second.
Okay, so.
And I'll tack on a motion to receive and file the mayor's update with that.
Second.
Good thinking. All right, so let me just follow along here. So 466 has been removed. We would put that. First reading? First reading. Let's see if we can keep track of the late files. Okay, so, so that was removed and the approval of the mayor's, acceptance, approval of the mayor's update is also added. So we will do a roll call on that? Roll call on those two motions combined. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Dunia.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you. That would lead us to the removed Appointment 466, Larry Junta.
Counsel President, I'd like to recuse myself. Thank you.
Motion to afford a planning and development? Second.
Okay, so there's a motion made by Counselor Zee, seconded by Counselor Preston to refer to planning and development. So we'll have a roll call? Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Recused.
That's right.
Still recused, yeah.
I'd like to check. We're here, we're here.
We're here. Everybody pinch yourselves.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Dunia.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
With one recused. Thank you. And, well, I'll let you, I think, Counselor McCauley. Old fashioned, Mr. President, but it worked. It worked. I believe appoint-
All right, I believe Appointment 478, late file Edward Normar would also be here.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to me, that would be to the Historic Commission until 3:15:2027?
That leads us, I believe, to Communication 535, the development agreements documents regarding
史
Historical Commission?
the APRA Sed Global.
PND.
Motion to refer to Planning Development and also 536 and 537 communications, also
Planning and Development, yeah.
All right, I changed that.
Refer to PND.
Second.
Okay, roll call on that.
related to the same, all related to Ordinance 164.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call on moving Appointment 478 to PND. Counselor Khan?
Seconded by Counselor Shan. Thank you for saving us a few votes. Any discussion? So referring
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
these three communications to Planning and Development.
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Where are the numbers I can't see?
Counselor Shan?
535, 536, which is a late file, and 573, which is also a late file.
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
537.
Counselor Grantis?
537.
Yes.
It's all communications.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Communications.
And Counselor Cameron?
I was in the orders.
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
I was following the agenda in the order.
So we think we would go right with 533. Communication 533, Middle Street Plumber, Spring Bridge, 36, 35, 36.
Sorry. We have overlapping communication and order numbers.
prepared next.
Motion to refer to Public Works and Safety, second.
Roll call.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Zee, seconded by Counselor McCauley to, so Middle Street
Okay, on that mega motion, Counselor Khan?
Plumber, Spring Bridge, communication from West Newbury would go to Public Works and
Yes.
And Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Safety.
Roll call?
Yes.
Roll call.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Khan? Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Lane? Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Yes.
And Counselor McCauley? Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Yes.
And Counselor Preston? Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan? Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Wright? Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Zee? And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Dunio? Thank you.
Yes.
That leads us, I believe, to Communication 535, the development agreements documents regarding Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
the APRA Sed Global.
Motion to refer to Planning Development and also 536 and 537 communications, also related to the same, all related to Ordinance 164.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Shan. Thank you for saving us a few votes. Any discussion? So referring these three communications to Planning and Development.
Where are the numbers I can't see?
535, 536, which is a late file, and 573, which is also a late file.
537.
537.
It's all communications.
Communications.
I was in the orders.
Yes.
I was following the agenda in the order.
36, 35, 36.
I'm sorry. We have overlapping communication and order numbers.
Roll call. Okay, on that mega motion, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
And Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Okay, I think we are down to.
Orders.
Orders, am I wrong?
Mm-mm.
I think we would go to Orders.
Orders, 165.
Orders, yes. Yes, that would be an ordinance, though, right? Okay, so orders?
Oops, sorry.
Order 536?
536, which is early voting dates for the year 2024.
Can we take up the referrals together? Motion to refer Order 536 to General Government, Order 537 Youth and Rec Services Design Approval to Community Services and Committee of the Whole, 538 Grant Acceptance Firefighters 14-1, and Order 539 Grant Acceptance EMPG, both to Budget and Finance.
I'll be seconding that.
Okay. I'm sorry, and you were sending early voting to?
Gen Gov?
Yep.
CS and Committee of the Whole, and then Budget and Finance for the last two.
Wonderful. Any discussion? Okay, collective mega motion, roll call?
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
And Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Now, I believe that leads us to Ordinance 165.
Motion to refer to Planning Development and Committee of the Whole?
Second.
Any discussion?
That was Ordinance 165, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
The zoning ordinance to establish state high overlay district, also known as SHOD.
You're welcome.
That's my word?
That's one of the terms. Counselor Khan, yes. Counselor Khan, go ahead.
Yes, I wasn't sure if this might be a procedural question, if we should be first discussing the ordinance in Planning and Development first, and then I didn't know what triggers a joint meeting of the planning board and the council of the planning development and the hearing. So in terms of the technological, I would just like to make clarification.
Yes, okay. Understood. Counselor Shan has her hand up.
Sure. Yes, I mean, I think we'll go through 164 tonight, and wherever that ends up, we'll figure out what we do with 165 afterwards.
Any other?
I will question on that.
Sure, go ahead.
If we could still refer this to Committee, Counselor Shan, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, roll call on referring SHOD to Planning and Development Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
SHOD is gone. Okay. Or so are all ordinances, which leads us to committee items, Mr. President.
Budget and Finance.
Thank you. Motion to receive and file Communication 531 Midyear Budget Report?
Second.
So the committee met on February 1st, was our most recent meeting, and this is our standard midyear budget report that we get every year courtesy of the Finance Director. And the Finance Director both provides a memo as well as in committee, sort of walks us through the high points. So that'll be my goal tonight as well. And I see him here as well, so I'm sure he's available at your disposal should you have questions. So the very high-level overview is that, you know, most things are as expected, running, give or take, around 50%, meaning revenues coming in as well as expenditures going out. There are a few notable individual line item exceptions that the Finance Director did provide some background for and re-probed around a little bit during committee by way of example, and this was a question from Award Five Counselors as well. For example, 152 Human Resources is 77% spent, and the reason for that is that, the long story short, is that workers' compensation is paid at the beginning of the year, so it absorbs a good amount of the budget right off the bat. So rather than go sort of through the mundane stuff as we did in committee, I'll just give you a couple of highlights of things that are different. Building permits are up quite a bit, which I think was a point of discussion in Budget and Finance. We've seen quite a bit of a growth in that over the last four or five years, I think with COVID, as we know, sort of kicking off a lot of home improvement projects and just the market, Newburyport. But this year, even halfway through the year, posted a pretty big gain on its own. We did ask, was that due to any specific project? And the answer was no. There wasn't any one, you know, sometimes we'll have a Boston Way-type project, which will drive a very large permit on its own. That wasn't really the case here. So this is a bit more, I'll use the term organic for lack of a better term. But we did ask for an update on the Boston Way project that we are still waiting to hear back. But the one that councils will remember, we provided some grace on paying in exchange to be able to help us out in other areas. So we'll wait to hear about that. Room occupancy is up. We did have a conversation about that. The feeling was that it was largely driven by short-term rentals, primarily, at least the theory is, it's hard to know precisely, but that short-term rentals that weren't on the registry on the state level are coming on to the registry, and so they're now kicking in their fees and so forth. So that's another area. The other big area of increase is the one-time inflation and interest works for you, is obviously our interest income is way up now that the city's able to turn roughly, give or take about 5% on most of its holdings, which can be and are substantive. A few areas that were down, water, sewer, and harbor are all down. Harbor, you know, experienced, I think, a bit of a rainy season last year. Remember, the fiscal year starts July 1st, so you get about half the season, let's call it, on either side of that. So that's an area that we did probe around a little bit. And then last thing here on this is that we did get a little bit of updates on free cash and possible transfers. Free cash current, based on what's been submitted, is sitting around 2.3 million. Water retained earnings 1.1, sewer retained earnings 1.7, Harbor Master 850K, stabilization 4.5 million, and what's left from ARPA to be encumbered by the end of the year, 1.2 million dollars. The Word Five Counselor did, as I mentioned, send in some questions, and I wanted to answer a couple of them. In terms of the proposed possible transfers that may come, part of it was legal. There seemed to be a bit of a dichotomy between what's been spent so far, which seemed relatively low, and the idea that we would need a transfer if it didn't seem like we were trending. The answer was, seems like there's some bit of a delay with billing. So perhaps when those bills come in, the numbers will make a little bit more sense. Parks Commission is listed. It's really the Parks Department, so just needing to update that. The Finance Director said he would change that. I told you about the workers' compensation, the legal. 543 Veteran Services 007 was very high. That's driven specifically by veterans' benefits, so that was paid. That is what has been paid so far. And then finally, we kind of closed out talking about, does this give us anything for building the next budget? And the answer was, of course, we're always looking at what the trends are. Generally, you know, they're running around 50, so that means that the estimates that were used are sort of as expected. And we shall see what comes next. At the end, it was a motion to receive and file, which the committee recommends to you by a vote of 2 to 0. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Receiving and filing Communication 531?
Correct.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is a motion to approve Transfer 177, which is free cash to fired injured-on-duty 27046.
Second.
So this is related to the fire department. This is related to the, to the fire, the former fire chief, and I think most folks are aware, but the city is currently working through a question there around the former employee's status. And councils will probably remember that the last ping on this, and this is all public information, we did talk about this publicly in committee, is that there's a process that's being undertaken through the retirement board right now because there has been an application by this individual to retire injured-on-duty, and that leaves that retirement board specifically solely, you know, a decision to make. They have two paths that they can, they can ultimately go. One is they can approve the request for that retirement, in which case the retired employee would then receive 73% of his highest salary before they left, tax-free for life. And then with so-called Option C, that would be passed on to the, to their beneficiary. In terms of literally where does the check get written from, that would be written from the retirement system. We do fund that every year as part of the budget, but the direct link would be hard to see. It would become part of that assessment that we see in our budget books every year. It's a single line item. It says retirement, typically runs around $5 million. The other option is that they can deny the application, in which case the applicant, of course, does have the right to appeal. And that would basically leave the former chief on injured-on-leve status. And that's where some of the, let's call it, the gray exists. And the city would then have a question, the city side would have a question about whether to consider if they still believe in that status or how they want to handle that. In that case, the salary would, in theory, continue to be paid. So that's the process that's being undertaken right now. While this process is playing out, the salary is being paid, and that means that two salaries are coming from one line, and you can only do that for so long before you run out. And so, as you know, the administration is permitted to spend from within the category. So they are able to cut the checks today, but as I mentioned, that cannot last forever because eventually you will exhaust the category. You'll start to need money from other places. And so this request specifically for $27,000 is, in theory, to carry us through the end of March. The process that I mentioned with the retirement board requires the three physicians to look at this individual and provide a recommendation to the board. And from what we understand, that process should conclude by the end of March. So the theory was to come in and ask for this. Councilors will also recall, this is not the first time that we're being asked for this. We did a similar transfer back in the fall. So there's a lot more detail in the minutes, if you're so inclined. This one did prompt a lot of conversation. In the end, it was, it was 2 to 0 to approve, and I'll cut the committee report there and just offer you my opinion as a counselor, is that I stated in the meeting, and I'll state it here, that I understand the need for the process to play out, but it's going to be very hard to convince me personally to vote for this again at the end of this conclusion. I am a believer that the council does have appropriation powers here and that we need to utilize them in order to come up with a good outcome for the city, which is not to take away something that somebody's owed, but to ensure that we can't pay a salary forever that doesn't necessarily comport or make sense, nor does it feel fair. So that's the consideration. So I hope that's enough information. You have the Chief of Staff here, who's been dealing with this, I think, a good amount. You have the Finance Director. It was 2 to 0 in committee at the end of that conversation.
Thank you, Counselor. Any comments, discussion? Okay, so the motion is to receive and file?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, it should be approve, right.
Yes, motion to approve.
Approve Transfer 177.
Correct.
Roll call.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
No.
Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion passes. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'm going to take a fire here and make a motion to approve collectively Transfers one eighty, one seventy-eight, and one seventy-nine, and I'm sorry, they're not in numeric order. Okay, so that's the order we discussed them in committee. So one eighty is a transfer of thirteen thousand dollars from CIP radio equipment to maintenance building and grounds. One seventy-eight is a receipts reserve for appropriation paid parking fund, thirty-three thousand and six dollars to parking LPR system. And Transfer one seventy-nine is free cash, forty-three K, to road and sidewalk improvements, same amount. So let me go through each one of these. In terms of the first one, Transfer one eighty, the source of funds is the CIP Capital Improvement Plan Radio Equipment. We funded that last year in an effort to replace a number of radios that the fire department was using. They are largely complete, I understand, from the chief, who did attend our committee meeting, and so there's a balance in there. You can see that on the transfer request. The whole project, the whole balance started around fifty-five K. There's about twenty-one K now. So essentially, they do feel that they're in good shape with the portable radios. There's a little bit of trouble brewing, I guess, with the repeater system around town, but that's a whole different ball of wax. So they don't feel that they need these funds to cover any more of its original intended purpose. In terms of what they needed it for, the boiler basically failed at Station One, and it's already been replaced because it was an emergent situation. They need heat. It's winter. So they've already gone ahead and replaced that, and so this transfer is needed to bring... So basically, they depleted their existing maintenance line in order to do so, and they need to bring themselves back up because we're not done with the fiscal year at this point. Price was prevailing wage. They got five estimates. Again, they did it on somewhat of an emergency basis. So the boilers were replaced. I think the only other interesting thing here with this boiler is that the Station Two budget didn't have any budget in it for radios, so I'm just pointing that out to be consistent with other challenges that we seem to face about how projects are presented. Sorry, editorializing. All right, let me keep going, and then I'll do my thing at the end. Transfer one seventy-eight, receipts reserve for appropriation parking fund. So as you probably know, the parking clerk, who is joining us tonight, and he looks a lot like the city clerk, so they may be brothers or something, but...
I wondered about that.
...they got a new vehicle for parking. It's the really cool-looking Mustang that you see driving around, or Mach-E, or whatever they call it these days, but it didn't, doesn't obviously come with an LPR. They did get the Mustang because that was the only vehicle they could get their hands on, which has been an ongoing challenge, so it did need to be outfitted. LPR is license plate recognition. This is the system that's utilized by the parking department to help enforce everything from the hourly limits and so forth without chalking tires and things you remember from the nineteen eighties. So basically, the source of funds is the receipts reserve. That's the fund where the parking revenue goes into. It does have a very healthy balance. The ask here is for thirty-three K. We had a little bit of conversation about debt service related to the garage. So interestingly, the vehicle runs about fifty, and the LPR runs about fifty in total. So you've got to put a parking vehicle on the road for about a hundred K in aggregate. It was two to zero in committee, and I should have mentioned on the other one, it was two to zero as well. And that takes me to one seventy-nine, which is this free cash to roadway and sidewalk improvements. So if you're familiar with State Street, they recently did the gas main there, National Grid did, and so best understanding we have is that at the conclusion of a project like that, they're expected, obviously, to patch the road, which they did. But if there's a higher desire, perhaps up to and including paving the whole street over, that's sort of somewhat of a negotiation between the city and National Grid at the conclusion. In this case, they came to an agreement that forty-three thousand dollars would be the amount that would be paid to the city to compensate the city for sort of the damages done... I'm using the term damage generally around replacing the gas main. I think everybody's familiar with it. You drive up State Street all the time. It's not great. We did have a conversation in committee about how they figure out forty-three thousand. We didn't get a hundred percent clarity on that, but that's the amount National Grid paid. We also asked if, you know, if there was a plan to spend that anytime soon, and actually the answer is not really. The answer is they took the money from National Grid, put it into free cash because that's where it goes legally, and this is to transfer it into roadway and sidewalk, but that there wasn't an immediate plan to spend on Straight Street because State Street is on the five-year plan, and in theory, it will get applied to that. We did talk about kind of losing the money in the system and things like that. Of course, in the end, you know, the money is being given to us, and this is an opportunity to transfer it from free cash to this at least dedicated for roadway and sidewalk, so it was two to zero. But I do think the committee, at least the two members, felt it'd be nice to see some action on State Street because it is kind of rough, especially at the bottom of State with the dips and all this stuff. So that was two to zero. Okay, so that's a break on the committee report. I just want to say two things editorially for myself. One is, I just want to keep saying how frustrated I am that boilers are apparently not that expensive, and that's proven out again here. We had the library come in, and they asked for some money. They ended up finishing their project, but here we have a boiler being completed for a fairly large building, and I'm sure most of you can guess where I'm going with this, but I would really like to see us get a proper quote for a boiler at the Brown School and put some questions to bed around why we can't just reactivate that building. And then as far as the sidewalk improvements, I just think forty-three is kind of insufficient for State Street, and, you know, I understand gas mains have to be done. So anyways, two, zero on all of them. If there's any questions, I'll do my best.
Good, thank you. Any further discussion? The motion was to approve the collective transfer of those three?
Three of them.
Okay, hearing none. Roll call? Roll call on approving Transfer one seventy-eight, one seventy-nine, and one eighty. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Final one is motion to approve Order five thirty-two, which is a gift acceptance. So this is tied in with the Black History Initiative, your report, and it's a gift, as mentioned. The gift amount is ten thousand. I'm not going to talk too much about it, but this is tied in with the CPC project, and in the CPC application, they reference that this gift would be sort of one of the funding sources to it, and so this is just bringing it to life. This is a lot of the interpretive signs that you may have seen or enjoyed around the city, most of which are largely completed. I think the only thing we asked was, you know, is there more? But it seems like the initiative, the project, is sort of wrapping up, and that this is a, you know, gets the numbers hopefully into where they need to be, and, but there's not like more signs in the works and things. I think they're coming to a rap, so to say. It was two to zero in committee.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Approving Order five thirty-two. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Final one is motion to approve Order five thirty-two, which is a gift acceptance. So this is tied in with the Black History Initiative, your report, and it's a gift, as mentioned. The gift amount is ten thousand. I'm not going to talk too much about it, but this is tied in with the CPC project, and in the CPC application, they reference that this gift would be sort of one of the funding sources to it, and so this is just bringing it to life. This is a lot of the interpretive signs that you may have seen or enjoyed around the city, most of which are largely completed. I think the only thing we asked was, you know, is there more? But it seems like the initiative, the project, is sort of wrapping up, and that this is a, you know, gets the numbers hopefully into where they need to be, and, but there's not like more signs in the works and things. I think they're coming to a wrap, so to say. It was two to zero in committee.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Approving Order five thirty-two. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Final one is motion to approve Order five thirty-two, which is a gift acceptance. So this is tied in with the Black History Initiative, your report, and it's a gift, as mentioned. The gift amount is ten thousand. I'm not going to talk too much about it, but this is tied in with the CPC project, and in the CPC application, they reference that this gift would be sort of one of the funding sources to it, and so this is just bringing it to life. This is a lot of the interpretive signs that you may have seen or enjoyed around the city, most of which are largely completed. I think the only thing we asked was, you know, is there more? But it seems like the initiative, the project, is sort of wrapping up, and that this is a, you know, gets the numbers hopefully into where they need to be, and, but there's not like more signs in the works and things. I think they're coming to a wrap, so to say. It was two to zero in committee.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Approving Order five thirty-two. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
So that's it for business tonight, Mr. President. I just want to note that we will be on our regular cadence meeting Thursday, and we do have the two committee of the whole items, which are the SOIs, the MSBA Statement of Interest that the mayor mentioned in his update. So if you are so interested in those, six o'clock Thursday here. That's it, thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Community services?
Yes, thank you. Nothing to report out tonight from the committee. However, we do, did obviously bring in the Recreation and Youth Services Design. The anticipation is to present that and have that debate at the hour of March fourth meeting, which is at five thirty here in council chambers, actually five P.M. here in council chambers. But given that we also have these nine appointments coming in, I did speak to the other two councillors on the committee today. We are going to schedule a meeting for the twenty-seventh at five thirty P.M. I sent an email to the clerk in case that hasn't actually shown up yet, but, so we will tackle those nine appointments at the meeting on the twenty-seventh. The Youth Services will be on the fourth.
Great. Thank you. General government, motion to approve Order five-two-eight, local acceptance of Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one-ten A.
Second.
Thank you. We met as general government earlier this evening. Seems like a long time ago. It's been a long night. And we did approve this three to zero. The clerk could explain it better than I can, but essentially, Mass Voter Act, which implemented some changes back in two thousand and three. On occasion, at election time, there, elections are on a Tuesday, there's a ten-day window where people, I think, I believe, can register to vote, and the timing is such that often one of those days falls on a Saturday, and the clerk recently learned that some communities, by accepting this, and that's what the vote to approve the order would be, would be a local acceptance. If we approve essentially this local home rule, a local acceptance, that would allow the city to not be open on Saturdays and have a person from the clerk's office here when nobody actually shows up, and it would be a little bit more efficient for the clerk's office. So I think that's my take on it. The clerk may have more. Counselor Z.
My question on this is, so it says, as determined by the, you know, in the city by the city council. So do we have to do an order every time there's a Saturday that falls in this window to keep it closed on Saturday?
What I have in mind is we would do an order for the year. I mean, to continue what the president said, it's really the Voter Act. The legislature generally passes laws without consulting the clerks. And when they say ten days before any election, that's always a Saturday because a Tuesday's always the election day. And that would be, for example, the last day to register to vote. No one comes in on Saturday to register to vote. We end up having to stay open the whole day. It's a waste of resources. So like other municipalities, if this was passed, we could move it to Friday or Monday, depending on what the council wanted to do. But my thought would be for efficiency to do every, like, for example, we have an election March fifth, we have an election September, whatever, that first Tuesday, and we have November, just as I know it. And that would go for any other election.
So just one follow-up. You said move it. Move what? You mean...
Move the required day. For example, the last day to register to vote would not be Saturday. It would be Friday.
Okay.
Because we're open Friday, if that makes any sense. And we do, first of all, we generally never have anyone come, but we would post it every place we post this, in our election calendar, on the door.
So by the by, I mean, March fifth, as you mentioned, we'd have to do an order for that basically now, I would think.
Right.
Or maybe at the next meeting. I mean, I have to do the math again on the calendar, but are we going to make it for that?
Well, you could include March, it's February, Kathleen, I'm putting you on the spot.
February twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, February twenty-fourth.
And what's our next council meeting? Is that after?
Twenty-sixth.
After.
It's twenty-sixth.
I mean, if you wanted to be adhered to the clerk's office forever, you could, you could include as part of the approval, the date of the twenty-fourth, meaning that be that Saturday, to, it would be moved legally to the twenty-third Friday.
I mean, I'm happy to make that amendment. I, that was my question about this. I mean, local acceptance gives you the ability to do it, but then you have to do it every time or in some fashion to make it happen. So I don't have the language, but I'd be happy to amend this, to add that, if that is helpful, if there's somebody who wants to support it, I don't know.
So perhaps the language would be just an additional sentence, you know, commencing for the election on March fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
I think it would say something specific, like the last day of registration for the March fifth election shall be...
I'd second that amendment.
Shall be Friday, February twenty-third.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that would handle it.
So seconded by Counselor McCauley.
Thank you.
So we don't have to have a special city council meeting, which is wrong where it would go.
Hopefully, the weather will be good on March fifth.
So...
Okay, so clerk, do you want to just read the language that you might have for that additional?
So I believe the approval is for Chapter forty-one, Section one-ten A, including at this time, moving Saturday as the last day to register to vote, Saturday, February twenty-fourth, to Friday, the twenty-third.
At seven P.M. or something, or what's the time? Noon?
It, by default, it goes to regular office hours, which...
Okay, that's fine.
Otherwise, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Any further discussion on this amended order? Roll call? Roll call. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you all. Next item is Appointment four-six-two. This is the appointment of the city solicitor, Murphy, Hestumee, and Lehane, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. So we did vote this out three to zero. There is, there was a discussion in committee, so it was the committee members, myself, Counselor Granis, and Counselor Khan, and we were also joined by Counselor McCauley. Karis North, who is also joining us this evening and will be available for the discussion around the zoning ordinance, one-six-four, is here. So we hired, we, the city, hired, and we did talk about who is the client here, and the client is the city. It's not the mayor. It's not the city council. The client is the city. We talked a little bit about our ordinance as well, and so, you know, this firm, Karis is the point person. They started on July first, twenty-twenty-three, so we're seven months or so into it. This would be extending the reappointment to January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five,
you know, while the law firm has performed according to everyone adequately to the needs that we have in the city, we actually haven't seen a report. We haven't actually seen any of the documentation as to how they've actually performed with that. So, a lot of it is anecdotal as much as anything else. Not to discount that, but on the other hand, we're not having a meeting which is, you know, which was by ordinance at the beginning of February to the end of February, and our next available meeting is, is March. I think it fair, only fair to the law firm as well as to the counselors, that we, we actually get in a room and actually have some discussion about this along the way and prior to us appointing them for another year plus or so going forward. That's my only rationale behind this going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Khan, thank you for noticing the hand. Counselor Khan?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Council President. I, I will support this, this motion made by the Ward 5 counselor. I, I do agree with a lot of the points that were raised in our committee. This is kind of our first time working with them, and it seems that the reports that's put forth makes a lot of sense. We did ask the committee in terms of the ramifications of not moving ahead of this appointment tonight, and it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, anyone that maybe to chief of staff, if it is a case, I believe the appointment expires at the end of January, but there's nothing to prohibit us from pushing this a little bit to March 11th. I want to make sure that that's absolutely clear, but I do see absolutely the reasons why. Just even looking back in the last five years, we have that reported that day on February 1st, so, which is timely, right before we approved them, so I do agree with this, this motion made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, and if the chief of staff wanted to, so if we, if we held this over till March 11th contractually, we'd still, and Karis is here, so she could say something as well, we'd still have them under our, our employ.
The city solicitor serves until an approval of a new city solicitor. I would say that the, the report has been talked about as an update on outstanding litigation, and the, the city solicitor saw that there was basically none. There's one piece that they'll be updating us on. So, that, that's how we've used the report in the past. I think that, that certainly could be a larger report. I know, and I've looked at some previous years when it did include maybe some updates on, on some pieces of, of litigation or some other, other things going on, but typically, it's a pretty narrowly defined report.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'll just add, as chair, you know, looking at the code of ordinances, it does say which are pen, you know, report and writing to the mayor and city council concerning all suits and legal proceedings in which the city is interested, which are pending, and that's kind of what we've been talking about, or have been determined during the preceding year. So, I, I think it's a little more expansive than just, than just, you know, current, current things. Counselor Khan, did you have your hand up again?
I, I was just going to agree with the new council president. I would look at our last year report, but it's not just the current, there's the status on the ones that quote. So, perhaps what we might find ourselves in is maybe not knowing all the information, but I would really like to see basically a look at what was provided last year and then follow up and make sure other cases are also updated in some form or another would make sense.
Right, thank you. Any, so, the motion is to move this to a date certain, March 11th. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call?
Roll call on that motion to move it to the date certain, March 11th. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So, general government is going to meet at 5:30 every Monday that we have a city council, full meeting. Those have all been posted, and I know we have another item that came through tonight for the election voting date. So, thank you. Turning to license and licenses and permits. Counselor Wright?
Thank you, Council President. We have two things to deal with today. The first is the, an application for an event. It's the Riverwalk Brewing Company.
Second.
So, a motion to approve.
Second.
The dates are 6/9, 7/21, and 9/29. We, we had, we had them present to us remotely at our meeting. They've done this for a number of years. There's no planned changes. Most of the activity occurs in and around the industrial park, and we voted to approve this in committee two to zero.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Roll call on Application 169. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the, the final item is a, it's again, it's a, an application to have a second-hand motor vehicles application.
Second.
A motion to approve.
Second.
So, this is like the ones we did last month, in the last meeting. This is Plum Auto Works on Story Avenue. All of their permits are in place. The gentleman came in person to discuss his plans for the upcoming year. We had discussions with the council and from the Ward 5 counselor noted that he was very pleased with the, with the cooperation of this particular business in keeping the sidewalks clear for us during the snow and impending snow, so that our contractor with Mass DOT has the ability to, to clear those sidewalks on Story Avenue in their location. So, this was voted to be approved two to zero out of committee.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Roll call on Application 173. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I know we are going to go to planning and development. I'm going to call a five-minute recess, so a couple of folks can take care of business, and then we'll get to the planning and development portion of the meeting. Okay, so, do I need to bang the gavel? I will. So, five-minute recess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna reconvene here. Thank you for the little break there. So,
anything coming out of planning and development?
Yes. Motion to declare an emergency to waive the rules to allow approval of Ordinance 164 tonight on first and second readings. We've all heard that the 90-day deadline is tomorrow, so for us to approve the ordinance...
Excuse me, excuse me.
So, to approve the ordinance, we need to do it, with one or two readings, we need to do them both tonight, so that's the reason for the emergency.
Okay, so, discussion on the emergency preamble. Counselor Zede?
Yeah, thank you. I'll certainly have more to say on the policy itself, but on the matter of the emergency, I think, you know, it's nice when a motion sort of makes your point for you, which is that we're, we're always, as the city council, being asked to waive our rules, to change our process, to accommodate someone else's timeline. I, I was on the council in 2021 when we first took up the concept of it being declared a nuisance property, and then waiting for months and a year, in fact, for, for the landowner to, to make some headway with the former deed restriction holder and so forth. So, as is always the case, the council is the one that's asked to simply disregard its own process, which is the literal text of this motion. I will oppose it, and I think that other councils should as well. The last thing I want to say on this topic specifically is that the council has actually the most open and transparent process. You can read our charter, you can read our rules, you can read the MGLs that control how zoning is able to move through, and so, in contrast, most of the other things, like the development agreement, which I'll be speaking against in a few minutes, was negotiated outside of the public purview, and yet, it's still the council that has splayed out exactly how it does things and how it will do things, that's asked to basically shelve its own process. That process exists for a reason. That process exists to make it transparent for residents. It exists to provide opportunity for comment, and when the second reading concept went away some years ago, based on a new interpretation, the city council itself decided to reinsert the two-reading requirement because it gives a cooling-off period to provide for, did we miss anything? Did we make any mistake? And to me, that speaks to the gravity of what you're doing with an ordinance. You're changing the law of the land, so to say, and in this case, the zoning law of the land, and that, that really should not be waived except in extraordinary circumstances, and with due respect, I'm not hearing that this is extraordinary. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, President. I would like to just sort of comment that in, in the short time I've been on the council, I do feel that we've waived the rules and have had emergency preambles for far less important things, things that are feel-good things, things that are of the moment, and I, I certainly don't think this is out of that realm. I think that time is of the essence for this, so for that reason, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Yeah, I, I think this is an important decision that we're making here. I agree that with Ward 1 counselor, that the emergency is of our own making collectively, and I think that, you know, we've, we've spoken about this as a important parcel. I, too, have opposition to the legislation itself, portions of it. I agree with the endgame, but the portions of it and the way we get there, and I do think that we should follow our own rules in this, in terms of, yes, we have waived rules for other things, but usually, it's, you know, parking for veterans, or Santa Parade, or something like that, that is, is getting, we very rarely waive the rules for an ordinance or something of that magnitude that is actually changing zoning, not just on this parcel, but with the redefinition is actually, will have impacts across the city, especially when we talk about MBTA zoning mandates that are coming down the pike. So, with that, I will oppose the actual, the, the request, the emergency request and the waiver of the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Khan, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I will actually support the emergency preamble. I think some of us, and I know we have many counselors, achieving counselors, but for those who have been here, the rest, the nine who have been, who are here sitting at the council, have been following this topic, and as you can see, the, the amendment that we're going to be talking about for the ordinance was actually done back in November, and we did have a few meetings. I remember attending, I think it was the last planning development committee meeting where we did talk the new ordinance, and we talked about the definition, and I do want to say I've accepted many conversations on this. There was a joint planning board and city council planning development committee meeting as well, which was over in the senior center. Definitely got a lot of feedback on this, so while, you know, given the start of this year, it may seem like we have just maybe, if this was a new item, a new matter of zoning that came in this year, then yes, I understand it seems like it's happening quickly, but given the fact that this was actually a carryover effort, that was covered highly in the paper, and quite, to be honest, really communicated, and we've all been following, so I'd like to feel, discuss it, take this matter up, have the conversation here amongst this group here, recognizing that we've always known about that timeframe of how it's trying to have, based on when the program started, as quoted in public. So, I would be supporting the emergency preamble. Thank you.
Okay, anybody who has not spoken yet? Counselor Zede?
Thank you. I just want to respectfully take exception with one comment in there. The process was defined for the, from the beginning, and that's true, but the process calls for two votes. This vote is, this vote right now, this motion, is to modify the process and remove a vote. So, I mean, I think it's important to recognize, the process isn't just for the counselors. The process is for the public and the transparency thereof. So, yes, that, you know, that's sort of like standing up and saying, well, I think we've talked, we've, we've heard enough about this, or we've known about it for long enough, so we're okay to vote on it, but that's, that's not just the measure of things. That predictability is actually very special and gives people an opportunity to understand, you know, hey, there's going to be this process, this amount of time, and, I mean, we'd always love to skirt some parts if we feel like we've got it, but that's, that's not how it's supposed to work. So, councils are being affirmatively asked to waive a part of the process. That's what this vote is tonight.
Further discussion? Mr. Clark, you have your hand up.
Chair?
Oh, go ahead. Counselor Khan?
Yeah, I have my hand up. I just want to set out by what I mean here. Please, I am not skirting the process, so let's be careful how our committees are getting to each other. I'm just pointing out that as I feel like I have every right as a council here to voice why I'm supporting something, I don't need everything over to be rephrased back to me, not with the intent of saying. All I'm just trying to point out is, yes, I recognize we're trying to also do two votes at once. Beyond the council, as I have the last six years, we did that at the end of the year, when we had to go ballot. We actually had to respond to ballot questions before the end of our term. Their terms and body have had to do certain actions based on the parameters that I mentioned before and the timing here. That needs to be considered, so there is no say look exactly how to do it, but that was really my intent. Thank you for letting me start, Paul.
Okay, Mr. Clark?
I was just wondering who the second was on this. I have you as the first, obviously.
I was.
Thank you. Counselor Dunneou, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call on the emergency preamble?
No, it's the waive the rules, declare an emergency, and approve Ordinance 164 in one reading. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zede?
No.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Needing eight, receiving eight, motion passes.
All right.
Counselor Shan?
All right, so, I think I want to start off by pointing out a picture. We have it here of Bossy Gillis, second from the left over here, and also doing some research. In 1928, there was a great New York Times article that stated he was fined $545 and had to serve two months in jail, one month of hard time, for conducting an illegal gasoline filling station. So, the history goes back a ways. Not too long ago, not, well, not quite 100 years, the Butters had had enough, and they probably wanted to have Global serve hard time, but instead, they asked their Ward 2 counselor to deal with this blight. They were tired of it. So, the prior Ward 2 counselor taught us what state nuisance laws are about, and we learned the power of the city council, and we brought Global to us as, in a public hearing, and asked about there being a derelict landlord, and Global came, and they agreed that they had been derelict landlords to the property, and they sheepishly agreed, and fast forward, they made remediations. They cleaned up the site, they plowed the snow, they planted arborvitae, they reduced the blight. I think they even, they got the tanks removed. So, over that period of time, they agreed that the best thing for us to, to do was to sell the property and have it as... the property and have it as residential, to match the rest of the area around it. So it wasn't until this past fall where a purchaser was interested, as we met, heard from one of the PM for the purchaser, about it tonight. And they started back in September, and they discussed the things that they wanted to do with the city, this planning office, and they agreed that the multifamily and the zoning needed to change, well, the zoning needed to change, excuse me. The zoning of the parcel was HSA, that is, the ridge. And if you look at the ridge definition, it would be really tough to try and put something on this parcel right now that would meet those requirements. So everyone agreed to try and make it R3. Prior to 2017, this was R3. So I know there were, there was a lot of discussion back then to make it HSA again, but we are going back to 2017 to making it R3. There were concerns that were brought up in the city council meeting, I mean, not city council, but our planning meeting last week. One was the R3 and the spot zoning. One of the discussions was, well, isn't this spot zoning by making it R3? Well, I think the comments that the chair of the planning board made and others, R3 is just taking it back to what it was, and it's taking it back to matching the other three corners of the State and High Street area. And it's, it meets the needs of what the planning office and what the city want, which is to basically remove the blight. By making this R3, we are also talking about, in this ordinance, changing the definition of multifamily. And that was something that was done during the planning meeting back in November. And basically, it's changed it such that, as you can read, it's one or more buildings or structures that together contain three or more dwelling units on the same lot, or at least one such building or structure contains three or more units. This is giving us the opportunity to allow for lesser massing in this area. And also, I think folks do need to remember, multifamily always requires a special permit. It is not by right. So anytime we have a multifamily come up, it's still going to have to go to the planning board or the ZBA. And in this case, the ZBA is going to be getting this document. The other item to note is, because of the, this location, it is a less than 20,000-square-foot lot, the developer is looking to do something similar to, that looks like other parts of High Street, where you have a three-unit building on the front and something that looks like a carriage house in the back, something similar to other areas of High Street. So they are trying to make it look like what the other areas of the community are. Another thing that was brought up, and it's probably another reason why we are as late as we are, is that the residents wanted to have more belts and suspenders with the development agreement, because they wanted to make sure, if we were to pass this ordinance and pass this zoning, they wanted to make sure that it was going to be residential, because R3 does allow for commercial use. So we did not get that updated development agreement between Global and the prospective buyer until last Thursday. We wanted to make sure that the abutters had gotten the belts and suspenders they wanted, which is why we are here tonight, having this emergency. The last thing I wanted to say is, comments about the ZBA being the special permit granting authority. We are here because of the abutters. The abutters were the ones that came out years ago and said that they were done with the blight. We are here because the abutters, the ones that said they wanted more belts and suspenders with the development agreement. So my thinking here is, if this ordinance is to pass, I am sure the abutters will have a chance to go to the ZBA and say that they want that peer review done. And I'm sure the abutters' voices will be heard and they'll be listened to. We had a good conversation, and everyone in that group agreed that we need to do something here. Not everyone agreed on the how to do it, but we all agreed that this blight needs to be dealt with. So what came out of committee, we agreed, three to zero to vote in favor of this ordinance 164, as amended by the planning board at the meeting in...
November.
November. Thank you. So let's have the discussion from here. Thank you.
Can I just ask the clerk, is there a motion on the floor to...
I said here, the motion was to waive the rules, declare an emergency, and approve.
Correct.
So it is done. Unless someone has a different opinion.
Yeah, I do. We were only voting on the emergency preamble, so...
And to approve at the end there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was and to approve.
Did anyone hear me?
I heard it.
I explicitly repeated it that way. And that was what you had written down, you were going to say.
Right.
I mean, unless there be any concern about it, you could have a confirmatory vote if you want.
Yeah, I think some people might have been under the impression that it was just on the emergency preamble.
That's fine.
And just if I can be, I don't know if I'd call this a scrivener's error because it wasn't in writing, but I think, I think the motion was to approve it in one reading, but that's not the motion to approve it. That was the motion to allow the emergency preamble.
That's what I heard. I did not hear to actually finally approve it.
Because I would not have voted the way...
Because I think we would have had a very different...
Point of order. Councillor, you can make a motion to reconsider. You were on the prevailing side, so if that's a concern, I would respectfully ask somebody on the prevailing side.
That would be cleaner.
Reconsider.
Okay. A second on that motion?
Now, hold on a second, before we go too far. Motion to reconsider, can it be heard at the same meeting? It can.
Yes.
So the only deadline is the noon the next day to reconsider?
Correct.
Okay. That's the ruling of the clerk, I'm comfortable with that.
Sir.
So we do have our city solicitor on the line, too, so you may have to prove her worth tonight.
So to be clear, it's to reconsider the vote to approve. You don't need to reconsider everything.
Correct.
Unless you want to reconsider everything, and then we would know clearly it's a vote to waive the rules, declare an emergency, and approve in one reading, which I know I said.
You did.
Maybe I should speak more clearly.
No, but I understood it to mean and to be able to approve it in one reading.
Yeah.
Not to approve it now. I mean, that's...
I could see where you might think that.
Point of order, would that have required a supermajority, or, okay? Just to approve the...
They both require eight votes.
Okay, thank you.
All require eight votes. Waive the rules do.
Okay, so the reconsideration would basically be the part about approving the ordinance...
The more I think about it, I think it would be to reconsider that vote, and then to make that vote again, to waive the rules, declare an emergency, and approve the ordinance in one reading. And approve the ordinance, so it's all clear. Am I right?
I think the reconsideration's on the whole vote. I don't think you can break up parts of the vote to reconsider.
That's exactly, that's what I meant to say. Communication's hard sometimes, it is.
I think, Charis, did you have your hand up? Or you were just, you just went on camera, and maybe you had your...
I did have my hand up when I came on camera. Just, I think that, I didn't hear the motion clearly, but my rights had been a two separate vote, a vote on the rules, and then a vote on the ordinance.
Okay.
So how do we, how do we take a step back to undo that large...
We just have to vote on the reconsideration.
Yeah, the first, what's on the floor is to reconsider. So that was your motion, seconded by...
I'll second it.
Yeah, point of order. But didn't we actually vote to waive the rules? Right? And then, so really, what we're talking about now is a motion to approve.
But we need to reset.
Except that the motion was unclear, I think, in some people's minds, so we should just reconsider it. And, but the first thing is to reconsider the vote, so let's take a vote on the motion to reconsider, if I might be so bold. Roll call, vote on motion reconsider?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zied?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Granis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
And Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
So, we can reconsider the matter, and I think the city solicitor's advice was to do it in a bipartisan way.
Okay.
Motion to waive the rule and declare an emergency.
Right. Motion to waive the rules and declare an emergency. I was like a...
Okay, so I think we heard everyone's argument, but does everyone, anyone want to add anything? So this is to waive the rules, declare an emergency. So it's procedural.
Great. So I shall proceed to a roll call vote on waiving the rules and declaring an emergency on the instant matter. Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
No.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
No.
Councillor Zied?
No, to waiving the rules and the emergency.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Granis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Needing eight, receiving eight, waiving the rules and declaring an emergency, pass.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve ordinance 164.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Donahue.
Sir.
Okay.
I'm done.
Do you want to repeat your whole? All right, thank you. All right, so now we're reset, and we'll do discussion. Again, we have council, city solicitor Charis North here, and also Director Port. Councillor Zied?
Thank you, and thank you for the reconsideration. I think it's an opportunity to debate, and I think that's the goal here, so I'm appreciative. And it was not a motion I could have made, not having been on the prevailing side. So I just want to talk about this from a couple of different dimensions, and I'll try and be as brief as possible. First thing I wanted to do is just clear up what I feel is what the actual proposal is. I think that the chair of planning gave a very good and impassioned argument for why the mobile station lot, that is the center of this conversation, needs to be rezoned, and why it needs to be redeveloped. And I think that there is broad agreement and consensus, at least on that general theory. What I feel was lacking was an impassioned argument for why changing all of R3 and a potentially growing R3 district makes sense. And so that's where I want to start. This is not a mobile station proposal, unfortunately. It is a broad proposal to rezone R3, but not just R3. That's another misconception, I think. It's actually to redefine multifamily, which isn't just R3. It's also several other districts, most notably WMD, waterfront marine-dependent, and WMU, waterfront marine use, which allow multifamily. So that's the first thing. I know that we are, you know, the second thing I want to say is, I understand that nothing exists in a vacuum in zoning, and that there's other pieces, like dimensional controls and so forth, and I'll talk more about those. But that's what this proposal is. And I want to start there, because I think it's to the detriment of the abutters, number one, who, as eloquently stated, were the genesis for this conversation in the first place. But it's also to the detriment of the current landowner, the current proponent of the project, and basically, all of the residents, because we've taken two things that really were like oil and water, and had no business being mixed together, and put them into one ordinance, perhaps under the guise of efficiency, or the city council being able to do things fast, or things like that, and this is what we end up with. I personally believe that a clean ordinance, maybe like the one that I proposed, but any one that was solely focused on the mobile station would not have any of these challenges, or not have had the level of challenges. So I want to be clear about what we're debating and where I'm taking exception. The second thing is, the process has been kind of rough since the beginning. The waiver of the rules is just the culmination of that sort of poor, poor process. But you also have a complete disaster with a development agreement that was completed without the input or vote of the city council. Does anybody want to talk about that? Does anybody understand what the implications of that are for other projects in the city? Development agreements are crucial. They create obligations for both the city, and it's funny, the chair of general government, the president, just mentioned the city. What is the city? The city is not just the mayor. The mayor is, the city is the city acting by, for, and through the city council, and the mayor. So you've got that problem to deal with. You're taking a very wide-range change to something that needed a very narrow rifle shot, and taking a different approach to it. The next one is, you have a deed restriction. No one yet can explain to me why we have a deed restriction that we don't have to accept. In 10 years, I've never seen such a thing before. It's enforceable by the city, but it's not, it's not a land transaction. I've sat on the council, many of us have, accepting historic preservation restrictions, accepting conservation restrictions, et cetera. My personal analysis is that's because it's a contract between two parties, but we're not one of the parties, so that agreement... So how many things can you look the other way on before you realize that you're actually creating a whole bunch of problems with this? If this is to pass, you are basically making the definition of a lot in R3 moot. The whole point of a lot is a lot holds one structure. If a lot can hold multiple structures, then why even have the definition of a lot? You essentially are saying it doesn't matter. The second thing is, asking for a special permit or dimensional controls to save you, or to protect you if you are a resident, it's kind of a false narrative. The special permit, the problem with it is, and this is my learning, and I admit, it takes time to learn this, and it did for me, the city council's role here is to create policy, to show direction to the boards that have to actually hear the permits and actually adjudicate them. You may say, well, they don't have to give it, but they will take it as tacit consent, that the city council is tacitly approving multiple structures on one lot, and we will all pay the price for that at some point down the road. Putting more than one structure on one lot is deeply controversial. That's why we have onerous and difficult processes for 6C and subdivision, which is typically used to split a lot into more than one. That gives you one path, or 6C in the case of single families, which, as was pointing out by the planning director, was recently reduced by the city council, showing its controversial nature along the way. I want to sympathize very much so with the abutters. I think they've been put in a terrible position. They do have a project, at least in some form, that they want to see go forward. I think the developer's been put in a crappy position, because they're looking at the city council and thinking that we don't seem to know what we're doing, and we can't seem to do it that fast. But it isn't really our fault. We are the last step of the process. We are the check and balance. We are the belt and suspenders. Our role here is to protect all the residents. And my biggest challenge with this is, if this passes, there will be a project where multiple structures are going on one lot, and it will spill into the city council, and they will come and ask us, how did this happen? And the answer will be that in the interest, short-term interest, of expediting a singular project, which really had no business getting to this point with this level of fraught, with this level of challenge, we traded that in exchange for them and their neighborhood, and that will be our fault, and that is not acceptable. I want to sleep with a clean conscience tonight, so I won't be voting or supporting this. There is an alternative. I provided it to you, spent my time writing it, yes, solely because I don't have any help with it, but I wrote what I could. I think it's a good, fair proposal. The only downside to it is, it will take a little bit more time. But again, we're rezoning wide swaths of the city, and growing, as was mentioned, with potentially with MBTA communities. And so it's our job to drive quality, process transparency, protect the residents, even when it's painful. And this is one of those times, and I really urge you to vote no on this. It does not make sense, and it cannot be amended to be better. Thank you.
Other comments? Discussion, Councillor Donahue? And then Councillor Khan?
Thank you, Council President. So as one of the sponsoring, one of the sponsors of this proposal, and also as the ward councillor for this location, I do have a responsibility to the abutters and the constituents in my ward. This property has been a blight far too long. It never should have been a gas station in the first place. It's been a blight since the 20s. It's disgusting. It was gross as a gas station, it was never pleasant, still not. Now, what I hear from my fellow Ward 1 counselor is there is a grave concern about what we're actually doing to the definition of R3 and what that means for the city at large. Previous meetings, we heard about the unintended consequences of changing the definition of R3 across the city. I hear this sentiment from my fellow counselors several times now. I've yet to figure out exactly what they mean besides infill, which, by the way, has not stopped happening. It doesn't happen everywhere, but it still happens. So I'm not really sure what we're fighting against, what we're railing against, because it is a win-win when we can diversify our housing stock, which we desperately, desperately need to do. People cannot afford to move in here. I'm not saying that the development at the corner of State and High is going to ever be affordable. That is not to be misconstrued. What I'm saying is that changing of the definition to R3 across the city will make a difference for affordability and diversity in our housing stock. How many people in this room have family members that work here and can't afford to live here? Multiple family members who can't afford to live here but yet work here serve you all, and your parents, and your neighbors, and your friends, and your kids. They serve a community that can't afford to live here. So what are we fighting about? Infill? I don't think so. It's the diversity that we're fighting about, and it's really frankly disheartening. I'll yield with that.
Counselor Khan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. With Attorney North here, I do want to address one of the items noted about the development agreement, actually, and I was wondering if Attorney North can clarify that, you know, the mayor, we did get the deed, the development agreement, the mayor made that public, and it was when we had the public, we had a joint hearing between the planning board and the council, and the public hearing, too, that this development agreement was also made available. And I didn't know, Attorney North, if you could provide some insight for councilors here in terms of the council's involvement in the formation of those type of agreements, because I've heard this before, and I honestly don't want to leave that out there, and I think we all want to hear what's the proper process or theories and established methods or approach to those types of agreements being formulated.
So Attorney North, yes, if you could answer that, that would be great.
Certainly. Development agreements are a regularly used tool in redevelopment of all types of projects, and they are always the purview of the executive of the municipality and not the purview of the legislative body. The legislative body's purview is limited to, not limited to, but is the zoning portion, and many development agreements will be contingent on potential zoning changes. But there were no concerns with the process here. This is his standard and within the authority of the executive, the mayor, to manage the interests of the city here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. My other point that I wanted to, I think, talk a little bit about here was related to the, oh, now I'm going to forget. So we were talking about the, oh, the development agreement was one point. The second point was related to our process, yes, the planning board's discussion on the definitions. So as opposed to, and I don't want to repeat myself in terms of when this first got into introduce to the council on our document, was that the planning board actually put out a memo that they, I have it up here, December 6th, which I'm not sure how the council has gotten, but in that they addressed each component of this change, this modification of the definition. And, you know, I do, you know, like I said, when anyone attended that meeting, you drew the conversation at the table, by not just the councilors there that were attendants, but also the planning board members. And in terms of looking at the map of R3 and where R3 is allowed, there was also a statement made in that very piece. And I actually defer to, I think, I don't know if the planning board chair is here as well, but I would like to really hear from them directly, too. You know, the council has been looking at this, and it seems like it's been discussed and understood, and we asked also for information, like what's the ramifications to the city, which was actually put into that memo from December 6th. So can we recognize the planning board chair to speak to that as well?
Thanks, Counselor. I've promoted Chair Tinter as a panelist, and Chair Tinter, if you want to discuss any of what Counselor Khan said, and also while you're at it, just, you know, the argument about, you know, multifamily, changing that definition, impact to other areas that are R3 or in the other districts that allow multifamily by special permit. Are you able to unmute yourself yet? And speak up loudly, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we looked at this proposal for changing the definition of multifamily to include one multifamily structure and another structure. It could be more than one, depending on the size of the lot. The idea was that being allowed to have more than one structure, yet at least one of the structures has at least been broken in the city. And we talked about this, we talked about what its implications might be in other types of cities, as at least the bank record has given you information about this, that the multifamily is allowed in a limited number of districts around the city, the R3 districts, several disused districts, and several mixed-use districts, but it's always allowed only by special permit. That's the first one, so it's always discretionary review. The second point is that if a multifamily structure, a multifamily use, has more than five dwellings, it also is subject to site time review by the planning board. So there's another layer of the, has a special permit for the zoning board and the site time review from the, sorry, special permit for the zoning board, site time review from the planning board. So you've got two boards looking at it, in the first case, the zoning board, and the discretionary review of the planning board, looking at the quality of standards. And again, always discretionary. And then the third point is that if you were to look at the MBTA community of multifamily, that would add an overlay district. You would not be looking at the underlying district, and you might very well want, for planning purposes, multiple structures on a lot. Imagine doing, for example, a multifamily of Story Avenue, Business District, or along the former Parkhead Drive site. You wouldn't necessarily go for very large multifamily structures. It might make better planning sense to go with multiple structures. But that's for a future decision. We haven't even looked at the zoning for those areas. So looking at the districts we have, of course, the idea of having a multiple, more than one structure on a lot, subject to all of the dimensional requirements, both of those lot, seems to make good planning sense for us, given that it's a special permit. Reference was made to the 6C process, which is for single-family and two-family structures. That is also a special permit process. The other example we looked at was the open space residential development, such as over at Colby Farm Lane. That is also a special permit process. Where we allow multiple structures on a lot, we always look at it as a special permit discretionary review process. I hope that answers what Counselor Khan was asking, if not, I'd have your vote further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That was set.
Counselor Khan, you're all set. Further discussion? Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. So I am split here, and I'm going to split this baby a little bit to try to get to a type of solution. I am in favor of rezoning this lot to R3. I am in favor of trying to accommodate, to a certain degree, the development agreement and the deed restriction, although it's not really a deed restriction, it's a contract that we need to get there, right? I'm in favor of them. I'm not in favor of the redefinition of multifamily along the way. I do think there's a pathway to get there that's better, that's easier for us. I think that what's happened is that we've been led down a more difficult pathway to get to the place that we want to go. This redefinition of multifamily is a potential Trojan horse into our zoning code when you consider the mandate coming down from the MBTA and the state. We talk about discretionary special permits, but multifamily is by right under the MBTA, and that's coming now. That's not coming maybe sometime in the future. Our mandate is to pass it by the end of 2024. So in one fell swoop, while we're trying to clean up the blight, to help the abutters, to help the seller, to help the buyer, to help the city, we're not doing any of those things in its current format. The Planning Director had passed around a late, late-file memo showing various areas in the city that would be affected by it. But that's today. That's not in nine months from now, when the mandate from the state is you expand R3 to a majority of the city, you expand multifamily by right, and that, in a way, takes all of the checks and balances that we said we think we want to have and disperses them throughout the city. I think a better way to be able to do that is to not go with this. I am a fan of the overlay district because it protects the seller, it protects the buyer, and it protects the city, because the commercial development is gone. It's part of the overlay. It no longer has to be a special negotiation that has to happen, which will drag on. The buyer has certainty that we are going to change this, you know, albeit it may be 30 days or so, but they have certainty that we are committed to getting this done. And the city gets everything that we need. We get the checks and balances and insurances. Let's remember that even if we change the zoning, they still have to go through other regulatory processes right now in the ZBA to be able to get this done. So there may be a point that the ZBA and the potential developer can't come to a resolution, and nothing gets done there. But that's a possibility. We all hope that doesn't happen, but that is a possibility. And in the agreements that have been signed and committed to the council to make changes to zoning on, what's gone on is we could be left just holding the bag yet again going forward here. And so that's why I oppose the pathway that's been suggested to us, to do an R3 plus a multifamily redefinition. I think it's cleaner for us. I think it's safer for us. I think it supports, again, I think it supports both the buyer, the seller, and the buyer in being able to move that forward. So, thank you. You know, one other point that was made, and I just, I can't let it go, and I don't want to be inflammatory. When we talk about unintended consequences of R3, it's not diversity of housing stock. It's, there are R1 areas and R2 areas right now that will be in play. We've already talked about them generally. When we talked about the MBTA mandate, you know, there's, in different wards, and I'm not picking on any ward, I just want to suggest it because I went through the zoning map. In Ward 2, there's Hill Street and Cherry Street. It could bleed into portions of the South End, Waterfront West. Ward 3, Ward 4, there's Johnson, Dexter, Toppin's, Summit. Ward 4, Ward 5, the hospital area, Hunter, Rossin, Ward 4 and Ward 5, Low Street on both sides of this. Plus, we already know that we've started the process of rezoning areas of Ward 5 and Ward 6. That process has already begun, and the discussions have already begun along those ways now. So it's not nebulous unintended consequences. We know what they are. We actually know where ground zero and ground zero plus one is going to be, because we know where the demands and the mandates from the state are going to come from. And that's, again, that's a debate for another time. But again, all I'm suggesting here is that I do believe we want the same thing. I just believe, I think there's a better pathway to get us there that ensures safety and compatibility with all three, seller, buyer, city. Thank you. I yield.
Here, Counselor McCauley. Counselor Khan, did you have your, or actually Counselor Preston, then Counselor Khan.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I, too, have sort of two minds on this. It's, at the end of the day, I really do think there's a very limited risk of where the change in the multifamily definition is really going to be able to make such a dramatic change in the city as it stands today. I fully understand, too, that should the legislation around the MBTA communities come forward, and we are, our hand is forced to change the zoning, you know, and we do have this current definition of multifamily, I do inherently see the risks there. But that is, well, it is close. It is not today. It is something that we could be looking forward to, and we could go back and reexamine the definition of multifamily, should we have these zoning changes across the city. So to me, that's something that I'm willing to move forward with. But I do want to say, I agree with the public comment earlier, that the overlay district, frankly, would have been a much more elegant solution for the issue that is in front of us today. Having said that, the time to introduce that potential overlay was November 15th, which is when we had the joint public hearing, or shortly after November 15th, I guess is a better way to say that, when we had the public hearing with the planning board. So from there, the definition was on the table, and, you know, there was the opportunity at that time. Of course, a lot of things have happened along the way. There have been many delays, but the definition hasn't really changed along the way. And so I think, you know, it would have been a really great idea to have introduced that overlay, and, you know, I think we would have had a lot more time to be able to really consider that. So at the end of the day, where we find ourselves today, I think where I will be in support of this, and the reason being is because I think the risk to the city today is relatively low. Again, we have the ability, should zoning need to change because of MBTA communities, we have the ability to reexamine the language and definitions of multifamily. But I think a delay at this point, the risk is really high to the city, because I think that leaves us with a blighted corner on probably the most prominent intersection in the city. And, you know, a number of deals have fallen apart because this has really dragged out for so very long, and I do not want to see us sit with this blighted corner. So my risk is low to move forward with this, and I think the risk is very high if we delay at this point. That's why I will be supporting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Preston. Before I go back to you, Counselor Khan, could I just ask Charis North to opine upon the connection, if any, between MBTA communities, which we do need to decide on by the end of the calendar year, and this conversation, particularly the change in multifamily? And I will add, one, you know, some of those streets that were mentioned are currently either R1 or R2, and we're talking about, you know, rezoning a small portion, you know, this area to R3, and also changing multifamily, again, does impact R3, which is not a huge swath of the city, but other business districts and some of the mixed-use districts. So do you have an opinion on that? And also, Counselor, I've called you Counselor before, but Director Port wants to say something. But Charis, do you want to go first on that?
Sure. I can't talk a lot about the New Birdport specifics, but what I do want to be clear about is that while the MBTA zoning, which is simply done as an overlay, requires that within those overlays, they, multifamily is as of right. It does not cater zoning and make multifamily as of right everywhere within the city. And the locations of those districts are to be determined on a city and town basis based on distance to the train station and the density. So I think Director Port could probably speak a little more specifically with respect to where there are areas in the city that they're looking at. We haven't gotten to that point yet in my discussions, but simply it's an overlay and it's location-specific and density-specific.
Okay. Director Port?
Sure, thank you. Just wanted to supplement that, and for that specific reason, as Charis mentioned, the MBTA legislation does require us to rezone some areas of the city. However, I think in context, and that is important here, while I appreciate the Ward 5 counselor's concern about the potential implications elsewhere, I think it should be noted here that the state is actually thinking, and I think we will be talking, obviously, starting, you know, next week with the Planning and Development Committee meeting, in more detail, but I think we're really largely talking about where the 40R district is around the train station, that MBTA area, as well as potentially Story Avenue as areas to satisfy MBTA. While the council and in our discussions, we certainly consider other areas of the city, and we may look at certain areas of, you know, up the Route 1 corridor, where there's areas, you know, where housing already is, and potentially taking essentially credit for areas of that nature. I'm not necessarily convinced there's, to Charis's point, an overlap per se between these areas that we have to be worried about, so to speak. So if we recognize that there is benefits from the state's perspective and possibly the city's perspective of, you know, having streamlined permitting for multifamily housing, similar to 40R district in some ways, over at Story Avenue, which is something we'll be discussing, as well as satisfying the state with the same expectation that we have in our 40R district by the train station today, which is as of right, multifamily housing, happens to have design review, which is important. I think, to Counsel Preston's point, we have the ability to have that discussion in the coming months and to land where the council feels comfortable with, while satisfying the state, but without necessarily having that impinge upon areas elsewhere in the city, as you can see in the zoning map or on the map that I provided today, that illustrates where some of those parcels where multifamily is allowed and lots are large enough to even where some of those parcels where multifamily is allowed and lots are large enough to even propose to have this multifamily. So in essence, I don't necessarily see that there's an impending conflict necessarily with the MBTA communities, or that by doing this change now, that will immediately turn into as of right in essentially problematic areas of the city. I do appreciate the concern. I'm just not convinced that we have to worry about that in context in this particular year.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Khan?
Yeah, if Director Port could stay there, one of the things I want to mention, and maybe I, I'm pretty certain when we had the planning board and the joint hearing, there was a suggestion of looking at an overlay for this location. And if I'm not mistaken, the argument was that was spot zoning. That would have been more determined to be seen as spot zoning. So can you speak to that? Because that was one of the reasons why I think that was not a pursuit here.
Sure. I don't recall there being, at least not any heavy discussion. It might have been a brief mention. I don't recall there being any heavy discussion of an overlay district for the purposes of the global site, so to speak. There may have been some limited discussion of that in different forms, but I don't recall that being a focus. I don't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily say it could be or would be spot zoning to do so. You know, again, I have used recently the comparison of the Brown School overlay district, which is also two parcels, relatively small, but can be easily distinguished, so to speak, from their surrounding neighborhoods. So while I'm not necessarily convinced that rezoning these two parcels together as one lot would be spot zoning, I think a good rationale can be made for having such an overlay district if there's a concern there. My perspective on the whole scheme here and all the different pieces, I'm not, just not necessarily convinced that that is necessary in order to achieve the end result that folks have talked about to date. And of course, everyone may have a different perspective of what that may be, but given that there's been relatively little complaint about the development plan that we've been seeing before us for a number of months now, and more discussion about process, it's just not, in the context of all the zoning that I'm familiar with and the permitting processes that we see at local level, I'm just not necessarily convinced we need to reset the clocks and go back and create an overlay district in order to get to what might be the same point essentially with a development scheme that seems reasonably appropriate for the area and has been vetted in various different forms. That does still require, even after a council vote here, ZBA approval of specific plans, site plan and elevation plans for the building, which has the opportunity then for plenty of butter input and peer review should the board deem that necessary. So there may have been a brief mention of it in different discussions. I don't think it was a focal point. It certainly wasn't, I guess in general, I don't think that any of the parties felt that it was the most efficient way or necessary to go that route in order to get to this. We had overlay districts for every small set of parcels in the city. That could also be problematic. We try to have general zoning for areas of the city and then, you know, go more specific where needed, and there have been overlay districts over the years. But again, it didn't seem to me obvious that we would need to have an overlay district here for this relatively small parcel, that it could be done essentially in the context of the R3 district, which this parcel originally was a couple of years ago.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Khan?
Thank you. I was not, one more thing, sorry. The last item I want to, and not for Director Port, sorry, the definition. You know, one of the things that I think I heard it from the planning board chair as well is knowing, and so I don't see it as detrimental, and I think I may have mentioned this before as well, that the appeal in the size of projects, and especially if we're going to be going down a route where because of what's been being coming down as mandates for us, having the opportunity for massing to be really rethought, a kind of rethinking of how we see multifamily structures. And there's a real opportunity, and as I was saying, I was looking research on, doing a little bit of research on how we're redefining multifamily structures. And this was one of the things in state guidance documents that I had seen. I didn't get a chance to see what other zoning kind of ordinances have modified their definitions, but I really do think that there was, there is an opportunity here. And so I will be supporting this ordinance, and I'll let others speak now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. Councilor Zied?
Thank you. I know these debates can go on, but it's a good discussion and probably a bit of a preview of discussions to come, and so it's important that we let the policy evolve over time. So I do want to respond to a couple of things. One is, you know, looking back at recent Newburyport history in terms of zoning, you know, you have the very difficult, I think, and painful LHD fight, the local historic district that some were a part of. Out of the ashes of that fight come the DCO, the demolition control, and DoD, the downtown overlay district, both overlays, by the way. And you realize the pain that I think everybody went through, those on the council but residents, in trying to find that balance. And then you fast forward to more recent years, and you see other evolutions of things that are trying to find this balance point where projects can occur but not having any blowups. And my early years on the council in large part were dominated by huge, in my opinion, development challenges. It was every week, it seemed like there was a meeting about a project that wasn't going well. And I mentioned this in the committee meeting, but we're in a time of relative peace, and maybe it's not appreciated because it's hard to appreciate something you have. You take it for granted. But one thing I've learned in that time is that these policies sometimes on their face get argued to be creating diversity of housing and so forth, but really what they do is they're designed really to create very expensive enriching projects for developers oftentimes and don't really end up delivering on the promise of trying. So it's kind of ironic to stand here on this project, there's clearly no affordable component to this, and argue that it has any tie-in with that. And in fact, going back to prior debates, when we had upzoned or more zoning capability, we were not getting affordable units. We were getting three $1 million condos instead of two $850,000 condos, which is kind of amazing. So there's some realities there that need to be reviewed. The second thing that's a tie-in to recent history is the role of the council in zoning. So in my opinion, in the last 10 years, we've had a bit of a positive shift where we've tried to take burden off of the boards, burden off of the boards, not put burden on the boards. Special permits and variances are burdens on boards because it's requiring them to basically zone on the fly. They have to decide. We took away, for example, the ability to have use variances. Why? Because that's a big question. Should a specific use be allowed in somewhere where it's not allowed? Should a board have to carry that weight? That's our job, and this is our job, too. So making everything a special permit sounds great on paper. It's all discretionary and so forth. But the reality is, is that you're putting the onus on the board, you're putting the weight on the board, and then they have to make an on-the-fly decision, and then they create precedent, and then the next thing that comes in. And so what they're really doing is, over time, they are rezoning the city on an ad hoc basis, rather than the city council standing on its hind legs and saying, this is our job. Our job to decide what the uses should be, what the dimension should be. And so the site plan review that was mentioned by the planning board chair is interesting because the site plan review only attaches at a threshold actually higher than this project. So it's, I think it's five, as was mentioned, that was my research as well. So it doesn't even attach on a project like this. And that takes me to my point about the risk analysis that was mentioned by the at-large councillor. It's a very fair analysis to do. Where I would respectfully disagree with my colleague is how the result of that analysis, this definition of R3 is tailor-made to destroy neighborhoods because all of the projects will come in under the threshold for site plan review. All of the projects will be subject to variances on the dimensional controls without all of the procedure and process around subdivision and so forth. And I bristle at the idea that Story Ave or that the old park and ride there couldn't be handled in a better way, just like this one could have. Those two could very easily be considered for overlay districts. Overlay districts are not spot zoning. It depends on the nature of the parcel and so forth, and historic considerations, what it's been used for and what it wants to be used for. As far as the timing goes, I'm sorry, you know, I sent my email on November 15th to the committee, and I said, these are my concerns. To me personally, it's the responsibility of, frankly, of the sponsors to try and meld the proposal into something that others can sit. It's not, in fact, historically, it was looked at as negative if you put in a proposal on top of a proposal. And so I did what I could, and I only wrote the thing for tonight just so that there could be a clear, obvious idea of what the alternative could be. The last two things I want to say is that this, you know, I had on my bingo card for tonight all of the arguments that I thought I would hear, and I thought it would be, it's too long, we got to get this going, it's really hard to get it right, and then I had, we'll fix it later. So I got that one. We'll get it right next time, and it doesn't matter that much. Those were the five that I wrote down to have my own arguments against them. And I would just say that this is a regression of some of the progress we've made over the last 10 years. It won't do anything for affordable, and we will have a project that will bite us, and we will regret this, and we won't revisit it. Revisiting things is where things go to die. So I'm still urging you to vote no. I think there's another path. I don't think it's going to kill this project, and it's just taking the longer-term view, which I think is what our responsibility is.
Councilor Wright?
Thank you, Council President. In the subcommittee, I voted in favor of bringing, moving this forward. And again, it was Solomon's Choice. I'm very much in favor of this development project, and I think everybody here is in favor of that. What I'm concerned about is the, I can point to the delays in what, in why we've had to have an emergency preamble. Those are not in the council's control. The negotiation for the deed restriction, which was always initially a condition of getting the zoning, is now no longer a condition of getting the zoning change. So if this project doesn't go together, and we change the voting tonight, change the zoning, then that deed restriction will never occur, and we will have a project that is subject to a much larger discussion for the next potential development. So I voted yes because I didn't have an alternative that I felt comfortable with. I think that we do have an alternative now. The downside to that alternative, and I'll recognize it, and I'll say it out loud, is that it's, you know, it's another delay, and that's unfortunate. It has financial impact to the developer, which I can understand. But the overlay district severs the two conflicting principles here. The fact that everybody wants to get this development done, it has unanimous support, I think, from the abutters. I think it's best for the city. I think everybody agrees on that. Where we disagree is the melding of these two ideas that don't really, shouldn't have probably been melded together in the first place. So I'm not going to support the zoning change tonight. I'm going to hope that the developer, if the vote is no, I'm hoping that the developer will hang in with us. I'm confident that the chair of planning and development and the planning board can expedite this consideration of the overlay district and come back in the shortest amount of time possible. But those are my thoughts, and that's my explanation for why I voted yes and why I'm now voting no.
Further council discussion? Council Harman?
Thank you, Council President. I will be supporting this. I just want to say this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity potentially to reduce a blight on Newburyport at what's been called one of our busiest intersections. Certainly doesn't feel like it's perfect, but I look forward as one of more consequential first votes that I'll be able to take in supporting this, and hopefully we will be able to get there. I think relying on hope that a developer will hang in with us is a risky strategy, and it seems like the risk, as at-large councillor said, to implementing this definition of multifamily is low. So I will be supporting it, and I hope that folks who care about that legacy that we might be able to leave will also.
Further discussion? Okay. Councilor Grass?
Yep. Thank you. I'm just a little confused. I have a couple of questions and a comment. Why was this State High overlay district introduced tonight and not months ago? I'm confused at that. I don't understand, I don't understand that. I feel like we, this should have been acted on months ago, not the day before this agreement has to be either put into effect or voted yes or no. I think a further delay could result potentially in the developer backing out of the deal, leaving us with a blighted gas station on the corner of State and High. And also, changing the definition back, I don't, how do we go, I'm curious how we go about if we need to change the definition of multi-use back. How does the council go about doing that? Thank you.
I think Director Port, you want to comment, and then Councilor Zied?
I'll defer to the sponsor of the new amendment, obviously, on that question in terms of the discussion there. But relative to amendments, and like any other zoning amendment, if you were to revisit any particular definition or map change, a councillor could sponsor it, could be put in the docket, have a joint hearing with the planning board, as typical, and come back to the council for some sort of vote, whatever that may be. So same process you see here, just played out with another proposal of some type, and that would be to revisit this text or anything else in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Councilor Zied?
Yeah, thank you. So as Andy sort of said, but I'll put a finer point on it, I mean, any councillor can do anything at any time, maybe is the dumbest, simplest way to put it. I've been expressing my concerns about this since I mentioned back in November when it basically first came in. Typically, the committee works to try and address, you know, those concerns, but I suppose if there's a feeling that there's eight votes, then you don't have to listen to any concerns. But committee is the place where consensus is supposed to be driven, and I just want to say again, this too-late argument, you know, it's not my sole responsibility, certainly, and everybody has their vote here, but I wanted tonight to come in and show you an alternative rather than just speak about an alternative. We're going to find out very shortly whether that matters or not, but that's the reality. The last thing I want to say is just, I'm amazed, I guess, at how little some think of Newburyport today, you know, in terms of this desire, ability to get developers to develop in Newburyport. We just had our mid-year budget where building permits were up 71.3%. So the way I hear people talking, it makes it sound like maybe it's a city council meeting from the '70s when Newburyport was desperately trying to attract developers to Newburyport. Now we can't seem to slow down $3 million single-family homes or $1.9 million condos along the way. So it does take a little bit of fortitude to be able to say, this is what's best for the city. This is what protects the most number of residents. Because again, you're talking about a number of abutters around a single property, and then R3, which is a much larger circle, and then possibly growing. And so it's been a never-ending, never-ending problem, but I would just say, you know, that the city council continues to provide its playbook to others. If you want to get us, just corner us at the last minute, and we'll always fold, and that's really got to change, maybe tonight.
Thank you, Council McCauley.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm going to try to answer a question about the state and the MBTA, why that came in. It's always been hanging over us, and we had a debate a year ago about this that said, it's coming down the pike, we're in a different category, we have till the end of 2024. But here are the rules. If you've, if anyone was paying attention to the Globe this week, they had a great series of articles about what's going on in Milton, a very emotional debate, you know, Whittier-like in terms of yeses and nos on both sides and the debates that they want to have there. And a lot of it is because people haven't read the fine print, and when they do, they're a little bit alarmed at it because this is now the state telling us how we're supposed to build our community. It's Farmville on steroids, right? It's, yes, it's an overlay district. Yes, you'd have to create an overlay district, but you just keep making the district bigger and bigger and bigger along the way to go forward with that. So that's kind of the first part of that, is that it's always there. And I think that the thought process is, let's keep our blinders on so that we could just focus on this particular parcel, and therefore, when we get the parcel done, then we can hit the reset button. But I think as we've learned through short-term rental debate, when you give somebody a right by right, it's virtually impossible to take it away. It also signals to the board that the other boards, the volunteer boards that do their best to implement the rules and the directions that we set for them, that says to them, it's like, listen, well, this is the direction that the council wanted to go, so it's okay. You know, if something's a little questionable, let's remember that the owner of the property is by right able to do those things, so we should figure out a way to say yes, right? And sometimes you get good developments, sometimes you don't along the way. That's part and parcel of having some forethought to be able to take a step back and be able, and be, I hope I answered your question on that. But further, if I may, Chair, is, listen, again, I would agree with the at-large councillor who said, I think we know what we want there, right? It's just the pathway to get there, and I think there's an easier path to do that. So I'm going to vote no against it. I urge others to vote no against it. We will get there. We will get there right for the potential developer who hasn't even, who has a purchase sale but hasn't, they don't own the property. We do have, and the seller has laid out conditions that they will sell the property to. That, too, can blow up at any given time. Not that it wants to, but it could. And yet again, it's the city that's made the commitments to take steps. And yet again, it's the city that's made the commitments to take steps. There's no contingency. We can't back out of it. There's no, there's no breakup penalty that we get the, the benefit of. There's nothing like that in these agreements that would benefit the city, other than, we're going to go out of our way to help you. Yes, you can take 40 extra days to sign a deed restriction, and we're going to bend our rules to be able to get back in that. Again, I urge a little patience in getting here. I think we will get to the end result along the way. Again, I just don't think this is the pathway. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Khan, and then I think we'll be heading for a vote. Counselor Khan? You on mute?
Thank you, Council President. I mean, I think, you know, I just, one aspect I did not clear is, it, this is not to me what I was hoping at this for housing here, and I, I don't think I expressed that. You know, we're, I'm doing what it, it, it seems that needs to, to happen to get a development project there, but am I happy that these are million-dollar, probably, homes that are being built? You know, for me, ideally, affordability is a key aspect. So there will be things that I was supporting or having to move ahead on that's not going to be my ideal. And I, you know, I, I've been following the conversation, and I think what I've seen is, you know, just maybe unhappiness about the definitions, unhappiness maybe from, some people from the very beginning, that we're not happy with what the solution or what the, what was proposed. But what I will go back to, and ultimately, there's a process, there's a procedure, there is a public hearing, there, those are key things. Now, one could say, have they been effective? Have they worked? There's times when we have had to go back to the drawing board on topics and areas. But with this one, when you hold into the key pain points, we have continually been asking for evidence on what are the implications, the ramifications. And a lot of us are, in one case, maybe saying, or speculating, destroying neighborhoods. You know, there is no evidence. Some of us are saying that there is, you know, the risk analysis is low. No evidence on any of it. But what we do know is R3. R3 is very well-defined in our ordinances. R3 is very much for multifamily. Very much, we have put in the tools, the mechanisms that have been set, that have been talked about when the ordinances and definitions were formulated. For me, this process has been, in my opinion, very transparent from the very moment that the mayor has, you know, provided the development agreement. I think there are some steps along the way that I, I believe some of us feel like we were not maybe critical in being involved. But to me, this is the way, I think, is best to move ahead. I hope we can see this and go back and continue this conversation. When we look at the zoning in general, which needs to be looked at holistically, as we do try to tackle the biggest issue that's coming out of that, out of this whole discussion, it's housing. And it's not going to be solved by this, but it is going to be critical. And all the points we're raising right now, whether things are tools, or are they a burden, or if we're destroying neighborhoods, all this will come up when we talk holistically about our zoning as it currently stands.
Okay. I think we're ready for a vote, seeing no hands. Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll?
To be cleared, a motion to approve Ordinance 164 in one reading, that is this evening. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Doniu?
Yes.
Counselor Grannis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Eight, receiving eight, motion passes.
Okay. Anything further out of Planning and Development?
Yes, I mean, we did receive, oops, thank you, Council President. We did receive a few communications tonight that seems that might as well go on and receive and file, the ones regarding the 160, the zoning itself. So maybe it's a motion to receive and file Communication 536, 537, and probably Ordinance 165 should be received and filed as well.
You can't receive, they've already been referred to committee. You'd have to do more than that.
They've got to come back up.
Keep them in for a night. Okay.
We'll do it at the next one.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. So our next committee meeting is next Tuesday. The intent for that meeting is to go through the communication on MBTA communities. So that's, Communication 530 will be next week. And then the Communication 529, the letter from Mr. McCarthy, is still in committee right now. They're going to work with the Planning Office on what a new ordinance should look like for the signs. So that is it for P and D.
Thank you. Public Works and Safety, Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to give the motion to receive and file Communication 532.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to give the committee report as well, that goes along with this.
Yep.
Thanks. First of all, we had a visit from the police marshal. Overall, the department is good. They finished their accreditation review last year. It's good for three years. The still, the city is still within the minority of cities that accredit its police force. It's good policies to do so. We've seen many benefits of that over the years. Staffing, there's two officers on maternity leave, they have one temp coverage, they have one finalized disability that'll be open, they have two officers in the academy, they don't expect them till May. They are recruiting off a list that the city has, but now they're non-resident, and so they're out of the city. One of the hurdles that they have is, we still align with civil service as a gating factor in being able to, you may come out, but you also have to be on the civil service list along the way. The legislator, the legislation in Boston is actually working to possibly offer some waivers to be able to do that. It would ease personnel crunch going forward. We talked about capital. There's a dispatch center still in need. It's been in need for the last four years. It was $400,000, now it's $700,000 or so, and continues to grow. There's a need for upgrade of their portable radios, they're falling apart, the computers in their cruisers are now too old, and they have a cruiser, and they need to adjust that in their lease-to-own type of thing. These are some, some headlights, headlines of things that we may get to see. There was a series of questions. There was a question from Counsel Doniu regarding adding security cameras to cover the waterfront park, and the answer was sort of. There's a new building, there's a new one that they want to put on the Harbor Master in the second front of the police station that would cover that particular area. There was a reminder from Counselor Cameron, who joined us, that Ordinance 1210, all cameras within the city need council approval, and it's just a reminder to everyone about that. We did hear from Counselor Grannis about how we're actively pursuing grants, and the answer is yes, as always. Counsel Lane supports the project. And then we did end up with talking about enforcement and electronic speed signs, and it would be nice to add some of those along the way to help with the awareness of what's going on there. Of particular importance is Communication 532, so that's why I did the other part first, and I appreciate this. In the email, Counselor Zee detailed his concerns about the financing and administration of the Phillips Drive project, not the operational aspect. The operational meeting was held prior to educate resident, residents between engineering, DPS engineering staff and the residents themselves. They were very comfortable with that. In, in the email, it asserts it could be upwards of $1 million of overruns, including it, and that included a 10% contingency, addition of a top coat, construction hurdles. The council approved the financing of the entire project, not just portions of it. So in this particular case, it would appear that the council approved 75% of the project, not 110%, which we had thought. And so our notes, our council notes, which there said, we thought we had everything. The order that we says specifically says that we take $1 million from ARPA, $1.5 million from a general bond, and $1.8 million from water and sewer bond. And included in that was a 10% contingency, which got us to the 4.4 million. It states, any and all cost within this 4.4 million does not allow, specifically calls out, does not allow any additional extra funding. Given the info provided, the city council, the expectation that the project was funded at 110%, 100%, actually, 110 with the contingency. We were joined by DPS Director Ameral, who's present, as was Chief of Staff Levine. Upon review there, upon review after the fact, they felt the 4.4 was insufficient. The contingency, the consent contingencies that were laid out should have aligned better with Masdot standards going forward. So construction should have had a 15% contingency, engineering services should have had a 2% to 3%, OPM should have had a 5%. So in summary, we should have had a 20% to 25% contingency on this project, and if we would do that, we would be right around where the number should be. And, and from day one, this project came in higher than the expectations that the council had. The administration, for one reason or another, chose not to communicate this fact to the city council. So it was a bit of a mission that we had to uncover when Phillips Drive showed up on the five-year roads and sidewalk plan. After some discussion, again, not intended to fix blame, but rather to understand how not to repeat this, we need better pricing metrics prior to bid requests. We need a clearer scope expectation of what is in and what is out of projects. We need project financing or clearly articulated portions, design, engineering, construction. We need timely and transparent communication between the administration and the city council. This, in many ways, is the biggest issue that we had. The administration, for example, attempting to move scope from this project into Chapter 90, i.e. the top coat that they had talked about, is in reallocate, is in reality reallocating resources that we, the city council, had allocated elsewhere. The money is delayed from other priority projects. For example, there will be no sidewalk on Mosley, there will be, there may be threatened construction at Colby Farm intersection. Completion of Little Street may be delayed. The fix of Kent and Merrimack Street is off. Traffic calming on Fair, these things that were once priorities may not get funding now along the way. These are examples. They, some might consider them extreme examples, they're examples of communication we've had with residents that now, with a reallocation of resources, are now threatened and in jeopardy. So the next step that we all agree to is DPS will submit to the administration a funding request for the remaining items. The administration will submit to the city council for review and funding approval. Law estimates is that it's $250,000 to $650,000. And maybe the council considers leveraging ARPA versus Chapter 90 funds, or something like that, some creative way to get, get us to pay for the project, finish the project, and yet stay on course with our roads plan, which we all find important. A lesson learned, the council needs to reverse our recent trends for maximum flexibility to the administration, and we need to reinstate our project-based financing, accountability, and milestone management, and that's not confused with operational management of what happens on a day-to-day. All in all, it was a very good discussion, especially in light of the upcoming capital projects that we have, that will need to fit into project budget boxes in order for us to get them all done. Thank you. I yield.
So we have a motion on the floor to receive and file?
Correct.
Communication 532?
Correct.
Roll call. Counselor Zee?
Yeah, I just, as the author of the email, I just wanted to explain why I undertook it and what my takeaways are, not as long as the Ward five counselor, I think, captured many of them. But what's frustrating for me is that unfortunately, the experience with this project is, is not a one-off, it's pretty much par for the course. I mean, typically, the, the council, I, I can't tell you how many meetings I spent talking about asphalt loaf curbs versus granite, some of my colleagues may remember that. And then this notion that we didn't fund paving the street at the end of basically destroying a whole neighborhood's worth of street is functionally insane. I mean, it really is. And so what, what's frustrating to me is all this conversation about process and transparency, and then we get on this floor and we have a debate, it's the same debate over and over, it's the same debate we just had. Do you move a project forward knowing it's, quote, imperfect? Do you hold the line to get the details? And this is the outcome. And the funding request that comes to us may be $200,000. We'll be lucky if it is, but that doesn't mean that's the entire amount of the overage. And when we vet a project, whether it's a small, tiny piece of sidewalk, or it's a new building on Low Street for XYZ dollars, the point is, is that we only have a limited, finite window of control and opportunity to ask, and then the value engineering begins, it's a fancy term for cutting things out of the project, whether they were discussed by the council or not, the opportunity to go in to dip into other pots of money that we make available at times to the administration with no further requirements, and then we argue about, we want to check in at 50% design, we want to argue in 80, and then on this floor, the argument is, well, we, you know, let's just keep going, let's just keep going. Oh, no, it's too late, the project is over budget, let's chop off the following things without the public process, without the transparency. So as long as I'm here, and I'm given the opportunity to be here, I'm going to keep saying that. If it doesn't make a difference, then so be it. But that's, that's the end result, and tomorrow is, always looks bright, and then here we'll be saying $200,000, and we're saying, we can't, you know, those residents will be here at the mic saying, you can't leave us high and dry now, and they're right. But that doesn't mean that we're not taking the 200 from somewhere else, and the 250 to 650 isn't what my analysis shows. I think we're closer to the million-dollar mark by the time we rob Peter to pay Paul and take money from here, there, and everywhere. We may be lucky if we can get away with an appropriation on this floor as low as 200. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the receive and file for Communication 532? Okay. Roll call?
Roll call. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Doniu?
Yes.
Counsel Grannis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. Good of the order.
Counsel Shan? I'll defer to Counsel Shan.
Thank you. I'm going to speak on behalf of the Ward three counselor as well. We want to give a shout out to some of the folks at DPS. There was a street in our ward, Johnson Street, that has perpetually had a leaky, something coming from one of the homes where it was a constant ice skating rink, and it's been like this since my niece was in middle school, and my niece is in college now. Jonathan Carey, Ron Keefe, and Jen Sullivan took care of it this time, and they were able to fix, I identified the water, and with some help from the firefighters, they actually were able to go in the house, which seems to have been abandoned, and turn off the water. So thank you to our friends at DPS, very much appreciated. And if I knew who the firefighters were, I'd name them too, but those three folks, much appreciated. Thank you.
Counsel Wright?
Counsel President, fellow counselors, as many of you know, I will be jetting off to Chennai in India on Wednesday, and with the time difference, it might be a little challenging for me to participate. So please stand by for some possible changes in the schedule, particularly of licenses, license and permits, and my participation in some of the committee meetings that we'll be having. For, for your information, 6:00 Eastern Time is 4:30 in the morning in India, so I can't promise anything.
We can send you coffee to get you, get you up in the morning. Great, thank you, and good, good luck on your trip.
Thank you.
I'm sure, we'll, we'll try to keep everything going while you're gone. Great, anything else? Good of the order? Motion to adjourn?
Two seconds.
And we will do a roll call on this.
Counsel to adjourn, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Doniu?
Yes.
Counsel Grannis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.